Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. Especially like to give a welcome to new city manager, Griffin Graham. So glad you are here tonight.
Very happy to be here, thank you.
Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Present.
Maryringa.
Present.
Northup.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Here.
Vanderwall. And Mayor Mas.
Here. JR Vanderwall is going to be gone tonight and he's asked to be excused. Is there a motion to excuse him? He's out of town.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? Alright, good. Well, for the invocation tonight, we have Pastor Lori Yonkman. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You did, thank you.
Alright. From Ivan Rest Christian Reform Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. And we are going to follow that with the pledge of allegiance.
Let's turn to God in prayer. Lord our God, we just give you thanks and praise that we can gather here tonight as some leaders in the community and work together in a spirit of cooperation, that we live in a place where schools and businesses and churches, communities of faith and government leaders, Lord, can work together, cooperate with one another for the good of your city, Granville. God, we ask that you would just work in the minds and in the hearts of the people here tonight as they deliberate and discuss and make decisions. And may those decisions be for the good not only of the people here in this room, but for the good of the people in the surrounding area. And actually, Lord, in the world, may we be cognizant of the freedoms that we have here that people around the world do not as we make decisions and we give thanks for the freedoms that we do have. Lord, bless these people, protect them, our law enforcement officers, those in fire and rescue, those who work in government. We give you thanks for them and for their willingness to serve. We pray all of this through your son, Jesus Christ, who himself was the example of serving and self-giving. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you. You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? Please say no. Great. We also have our minutes from the last meeting, July 8th. Had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out on those? If not, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition? Please say no. It's that time of year where we have old fiscal year and new fiscal year. So what's bills? So let's take a look at the old fiscal year bills, about just a touch under $800,000. Griffin, is there anything that you would like to point out? Or Jane?
I would. I've got a couple that I'll highlight for you to start in the old fiscal year. Two in particular. One is from Dyke House Construction in the amount of $384,000. This has to do with the fire station roof repair replacement project that is ongoing. And then secondly, I'd like to highlight Franklin Howard Company. I might be butchering that, so I apologize. In the amount of $206,000. This has to do with the ongoing blower project and mixer improvements at the Clean Water Plant. In regard to the old fiscal year, those are the only two I have to highlight. But you will note that about 400 and some change thousand, so over two-thirds of the total amount for the old fiscal year is coming from the general fund. But of that, over 75, or 75% of it is the one expense having to do with the fire station. So that's why this seems to be a notable number than some other meetings.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Griffin on any of the bills from the old fiscal year? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills for the old fiscal year in the amount of $796,509.33?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any final comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryringa.
Yes.
Northup.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Now for the new fiscal year in the amount of approximately $150,000. Griffin, anything you'd like to point out on those bills?
Yes, thank you. Again, I've got primarily just two that I'll highlight for you unless anyone has any questions. First, I'd like to highlight a bill from Axon Enterprise Inc. They produce both police department car and body cameras. So we purchased a new body camera for a police officer and then I believe it was nine car cameras. Those were budgeted for replacement this year, so to replace existing ones, but just to make sure that our technology is staying up to date. Axon's a really an industry standard when it comes to these types of cameras. And then secondly, I'd like to highlight Hungerford Nickel CPAs and advisors in the amount of 9,000. Many of you will remember from a few meetings ago, the city council approved a budget of approximately $11,000 to hire the CPA and advisors group to help prepare an IRA tax return. It has been prepared and filed and we are expecting almost $3.7 million of tax return to come back for the Clean Water Plant. So we are a little bit under budget. It was expected to be about 11,000. The bill came in at 9,000 and if we ultimately get the 3.6, 3.7 million dollars, we're expecting that's a pretty good return on investment.
Yeah. Any questions for Griffin on the bills from the new fiscal year? No, is there a motion to approve the bills for the new fiscal year in the amount of
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Final questions, comments? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Northup.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maryringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Next, presentation by Amanda about the Fourth of July. It was a beautiful day.
Yes.
There were a lot of people.
Lot of people, beautiful day. Couldn't have went any better.
I think Griffin, you were there as well?
Absolutely. Yeah, my wife and I were in town. It was great.
Oh, excellent. Glad that you guys got to come out. I'm going to start with a video that I had made of the day. The sound in the room isn't working, but you should be able to just hear the music off my computer. So I'll start that now.
What a great video.
Yeah.
Is that accessible somewhere?
Yeah, I can send it to you guys.
Ah, I love it.
Oh, excellent.
That's really good. I don't know who did it, but wow.
I had a friend of a friend from a nonprofit that I work with downtown put the video together for me. And my goal with this video was to create some sort of touch point to wrap up the year as well as use it for next year to promote the event for next year, especially with all of the new changes and the new things that we're planning on doing. My goal in the future would be to be able to make events for the individual events that I had done prior to the Fourth. But to kick it off.
Excellent.
I'm Amanda. For those of you who don't know me, I was hired on this year to take care of the Fourth of July event. In previous years, to my understanding, it had been the role of a few different people in City Hall. So this year, it was approved to create a new role so someone can solely focus on it, which was me. I have a passion for event planning. I love doing things for, and Marcy, it attached to my interview where I was so adamant about creating spaces where people can come and have fun together. So thank you, first of all, for letting me into this role and letting me go crazy and do the stuff that I want to do and move forward and hopefully make better changes. So right off the bat, this event, for what I wanted to do, I knew that there needed to be a focus on monetary growth. And this year, we did create a big change based on prior years and that helped cushion the new events that I had created. So just a sneak peek or an overlook of the prior years of our fiscal growth. This year, we totaled, and this does not include the $50,000 from the general fund, $64,000. This was attributed to an aggressive focus on sponsorship campaigns, which we'll touch on a little bit later. And then our expenditure, while larger because of the new events that we implemented through the contribution of the general fund, we did manage to cushion the expenditure of this year and it is setting us for success in future years when we expand the festival more. So new sponsors, like I had mentioned, typically a brochure was sent out for a maximum sponsorship cap of $3,000 to our community members. And I felt that we could push the envelope a little bit. So I wrote an additional sponsorship campaign that went up to $10,000. And I secured that with JDE Concrete, who isn't even a Granville member. They're out of Genesee. So they took our title sponsorship of $10,000. Additionally, for our baseball game, the John Davis Memorial Game, the softball game, Standale Lumber was a new sponsor who had not given to the event before and they gave us $5,000 towards that event. Sarah Honda has been a member of our community and has been giving to the festival for the last four years now. But this year, because of the sponsorship materials that were presented to them, they gave us an additional $7,500. This was also, they were the grand marshal of the parade and one of the guy's two daughters, Tessa and Teresa Bond, were our first grand marshals. They were very excited about it. I think they were like six and eight. So a little recap of the events we put on, starting June 29th, which is the same day as the Buck Creek Run, we did the new first pickleball tournament with Visor YMCA. Also, when I took this position, I took a look back at prior years, back 30 years of different events that were going on. And one of them I noticed was the Ice Cream Social that we weren't doing anymore. That was something that I felt would be a great opportunity to gravitate community members back towards the festival and bring awareness, so I did bring that back as well. The John Davis Memorial Game, of course, and then the Fourth of July. So the pickleball tournament. So I approached Visor YMCA to help me put this tournament on. I myself am not a pickleball expert, but they did a fantastic job of organizing the event and Wedgewood Park was a perfect place for it. Pickleball is the fastest growing recreational sport amongst anybody. And the goal of this tournament, while it is growing so quickly, I wanted to create a tournament where if I just started playing pickleball, I can come play. I don't have to be at a level of expertise to come and participate in this tournament. It's fun for everyone. The two girls in these pictures even noted, they said that they were way too scared to ever play in a pickleball tournament and they were so happy that they came out to this one because it felt like it was fun. Additionally, we had the Ice Cream Social the same day. And this tournament, and the whole day's events were very successful. I think that the advertisement that we did and local community places where people who play pickleball are frequenting, did really well for word of mouth, Facebook and Instagram promotion as well. Goodie bags, we had a number of sponsors who put together t-shirt, goodie bags, local vouchers for the YMCA, Meals on Wheels did, gave us a few things. And then we did have a food option, so our ice cream vendor also had food, which was albeit successful and I do plan on doing that next year. The Ice Cream Social, however, next year, I want to advertise that in a better way. I focused primarily on digital advertising and for the crowd that I want to participate in the Ice Cream Social, that wasn't very effective. So next year is going to be a lot of on-foot advertising, handing out flyers, visiting the local VFW halls because, given the Fourth of July events, I want to include the veterans. And I did have one veteran there. He was very excited to have a conversation with someone. I think that there's going to be a lot of success with this next year. And the John Davis Memorial Game, this, I believe, was probably the most successful of all the events in my eyes because of the trajectory of growth based on last year and just the outcome overall. So last year, Paul and Mike had mentioned there was maybe 15 people, if you had to guess?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five? Oh, okay. That was a lot larger than I thought this one had said. So 75 people. This year, we estimate there was about 200-plus people to this game and that also is attributed to Standale Lumber's contribution of $5,000. They also had given us a mechanical bowl, which helped a lot for online digital ads, and donated a number of silent auction items, which through tossing up different ideas of how to put on a fundraising campaign in a legal sense, since we didn't have a license, the silent auction actually turned out to work really, really well. And while I did want to do something different next year, I think that I might revisit that, but that'll be something that we will talk about. One thing I do want to do is work more with the police and fire department prior to this game to get a good situation going. Wood TV also came and did cover the event. The benefactor was Charlie Price and of course, the horrible tragedy that hit his family. We were happy to have that news coverage and like, I think I have that on here too, and raise more funds for him and his family. So we did raise just over $22,000 for him and his family. Things that worked, the comedy project, they had a t-shirt cannon, they were engaging the crowd. We were shooting out t-shirts, they were fun, they were funny. Food and beverage was definitely a plus. We had three food vendors. Activities, we had the mechanical bowl, we had a fast pitch softball tent, we had an area where kids can go and play drums and make music. And just the overall engagement of the game for the community, I wanted to make it an event where people can come and bring their families for the night, get dinner, watch the game, go home happy. And overall, I think that it was a big success with the few changes that I want to make next year, but I'm happy with the way that it turned out. And then the Fourth of July. Overall, a fantastic success. The parade, I think, went really, really well. What worked, we implemented a new float decorating contest to encourage people to go back to the roots of the parade where floats were decorated so grand. In the future, I think that we're going to add a few stipulations on what qualifies as a decorated float. However, it did bring a ton of traction, over 300 people voted on their favorite float as it was voted on by the community. So that was a way to engage community members, but also create some sort of, what's the word, incentive to decorate these floats. Because that's a parade. It's the visual, it's a float. Next year, I'm going to focus a lot on music. The marching band coming back was a huge plus. People were very happy about that. Steel Drum Band is in my midst, maybe a couple musical acts on floats, but creating that, making the parade one of the key events of the entire Fourth of July is a goal of mine. Other successes, the Kids Zone, Inflatables, always a success. Families and children love Inflatables. And then, of course, having those events free for families. I love providing brief stuff. I want the Fourth of July to be somewhere where our community can come and they can have a free day. They don't have to worry about that. In the future, I think a goal of mine would be to focus on, because we have the children engaged, focus on that 20-plus, 20, 40 area, maybe people without children, engaging them so that we can keep them at the park longer. One thing maybe far down the road would be carnival games, carnival rides. That would be something to be discussed based on the expenditure that we can bring in. Live performances, we were very successful with Clark Lewis, the Rogue Showman. I wanted to bring something different and juggling swords and chainsaws definitely was it. There was a fantastic response to that. People were not expecting it and when they saw it, it was something that they definitely took home with them. They were talking about it for the rest of the night. Professional audio also was a plus. So I had brought someone in outside and he had set up professional sound equipment, had professional sound run to each band and then it was created, their sound was created individually for them through each band. The bands loved it. It came for easy pickup, tear down, switch over, so we can move people through quickly. Next year, I think that this would be a fantastic opportunity to even include one more band because of how fast we can switch them over now. And then the VIP area, I liked the VIP area. This took place in the Wedgewood Park softball field and the goal of the VIP area was to create a space where everybody who had donated over $1,000 can come and bring their families and watch the fireworks. And this year, I had brought yard games and I had prepaid food there so they can go and get an ice cream and get pizza as a way to say thank you. I didn't expect how few people came. I had marketed it to my satisfaction. I thought that, I told them as much as I could, basically. So next year, I think that I want to get rid of this event and I want to create its Fourth of July's own annexed event. I think Wedgewood Park is a fantastic place to watch the fireworks and sitting there in that softball field and seeing all of the community members outside of it really made me feel like next year, I wanted to create an event where I can invite those community members into the space. John Rush was there and he played music during the fireworks and I loved it. Everybody loved it. It was fantastic. Next year, I think I want to do a firework track or have the bands play through the fireworks. It adds a really unique vibe to the situation and it's memorable. So looking forward, there's a couple of things that I'm excited to work towards next year, one of which is going to be June 29th, well, that Saturday before the Fourth of July when the Buck Creek Run happens and the pickleball tournament's going to happen again, when the Ice Cream Social is going to happen again. I would love to work towards putting together a community organization fair. So as the Buck Creek Run is ending and the pickleball tournament is starting and the Ice Cream Social is starting, having a space where community organizations can set up a tent and they can, like, community members can walk through. It's like, do I want to learn about title boxing or do I want to learn about this local running club or this book club? So people can come and have one local space where they can advertise their group to new members and new people can come and look for places. This is uniquely charged towards people who just moved into the community or people who are getting more involved. So that's something that I really hope that I can pull off next year. I'm going to be working towards it. And then, like I had just mentioned, the Wedgewood Park Firework Watching Zone, I want to make that its own unique event as well. But that's about what I have for it. I just want to give a special thank you to everybody here, especially Marcy. Thank you so much for bringing me on the team. I really appreciate it. I just realized that I only put your maiden name up there, so my apologies.
It still counts.
Of course, all of the Granville city staff, especially the DTW apartment. I don't know how they would have done it. Twice that weekend too, my boyfriend's car died and they came to the rescue as well and jumped his car for me. They did it all. And then, of course, my committee. I could not have done it without you guys and your support and pushing me along the way, answering all of my many, many questions, police and fire. Jane, who answered every single question that I had about anything at all, especially money. Teresa too, being my back. So thank you so much for, everybody, of course. Oh, I forgot that last sentence. So thanks.
Great. Anybody have questions or comments for Amanda?
Great presentation and thank you for all your work.
Oh, absolutely.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
I wonder if one of the chiefs want to go on record about who won the softball game?
Oh.
Next stop, the camera.
Thank you.
There's your answer.
Yeah, great job.
Okay. Well, thank you guys for the opportunity. Thank you for listening to my presentation. I will send you that event video.
That'll be great.
And then I'll be in contact if anybody needs anything.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council, just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address and tell us what you're thinking about this evening.
Kim Christman, 39, 42nd Court. First of all, well done, Amanda. I don't miss that part of the committee. Also, I would like to thank the chief. We had a patrol down Indian Mountains today as I'm coming back on my ride. Corporal Obama was there. It was great to see that. Secondly, Ivan Rest, thank you. It's much safer for cyclists right now. I appreciate it as a cyclist. And thirdly, I'd like to commend the city council for hiring Griffin. Everything we've heard and found out, a consensus builder. I've been in this city since 1988 and it runs by itself because we've got good city management. Ken did a magnificent job over the years. I think Griffin's going to do the same thing. And for those that voted for him to hire him, thank you. Well done. And I expect nothing better because we're a young community. We keep, I'm toward the end. I'm going to be gone. We're going to have younger people coming in and he's going to grow the city that way coming from South Haven. But again, I just wanted to compliment you on a job well done. He's the last guy.
Thanks for your comment. Anybody else like to address the council? Kyla, you got anything tonight? Okay. Mitch? I think, alright. Okay, we'll go on to business. We've got the consent agenda is the next item. So approval of the consent agenda will be in the best interest of the city because there's a few purchases on there. Another thing that we have to do is, before we vote on it, specify the delegates to the Michigan Municipal League 2024 Annual Meeting. I think the people who are going to go are Tim and you three?
Josh.
Josh.
And Randy and JR.
And JR.
Okay. So volunteers, Josh?
I'm the board of trustees, so I don't know that I can be the voting delegate at the business.
Randy?
Sure.
Okay, and then I think we need an alternate? Alright, thank you. So Randy's first in line, Tim is second. Thank you very much. So in the consent agenda, we have the June Police Report, which was really interesting. There were so many items in there that I thought were interesting, like just the amount of extra work in the police department because of change in gun registration and so on. It's like, wow, that's substantial. That's huge. Also, the cones with tops, that sounds, what a great idea and it was fun. I mean, there were a lot of things in there, so we've got the, so we've got the police report from June, the investment report that Jane has put together from July, and the Downtown Development Authority Minutes from July, as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals. And then we have the appointments, the delegates to the MERS Annual Meeting and those delegates are specified in your materials, they had already been selected. And then the appointment of the delegates to the MML, which we had just talked about. And then blanket purchase orders, quite a few of those. Those are pretty typical for the fiscal year '24 to '25. And then fire station alarm installation, as well as three vehicle purchases for the motor pool. So does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like to talk about any of those? There was quite a few things in the consent agenda tonight. Okay, things were pretty self-explanatory, so great. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Any comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Maryringa?
Yes.
Northup?
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. City managers' report, first time.
Oh, I know.
What have you got for us tonight?
Well, be patient with me a little bit, but we do have one item for all of your consideration and then a couple announcements to share. But to start, we have an application for a special liquor license request from Adesanya Meat and Microbrewery. They're requesting the special liquor license to set up a tent during the 2024 They're requesting the special liquor license, uh, to set up a tent during the Two Thousand Twenty-Four MetroCruise event this August. Uh, my understanding is this is an event that's been going on for about ten years. Um, there's no notable, uh, changes to the event, um, itself, other than they are adding a stop at Granville Plaza this year. Um, a copy of their, uh, Michigan Liquor Control Commission application is in your packet. Uh, the MLCC will review this and consider approval, uh, but first, it has to be reviewed and approved by the police chief. Um, and then, per Granville Code of Ordinances, also, uh, gets considered by the city council. So we do have, uh, the applicant in the audience today. Um, he's happy to speak to the application or answer any questions that you all may have.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Last year, I think was the first time that kind of, or maybe Borgman Ford or somewhere in that area. And I remember that because I stopped in Adesanya, and I believe Mitch and his wife were playing chess or some, you were playing some game. Actually, they were, they were playing some game. And so, anyway, long story, but since Mitch was here. Did you part, do it last year as well?
We did do it last year.
Okay.
It was the first year that Adesanya had participated, interjunctually Borgman Ford.
Okay.
And talking with the organizers of the MetroCruise this year, they want us to do it again. So we were going to do it. Uh, we did talk to the organizers, too, about maybe having, uh, some different participants. Uh, there's going to be a monster truck route that's going to be in Borgman Ford, so a little more tractor. Because for us, too, there's an expense, it's, it's a bit emotional. So, yeah, we're going to do it again.
I, yeah, so I remember, um, last year, it seemed pretty busy when I was there. I mean, inside, and then I think, uh, maybe a tent or something.
Yeah, we'll have, yeah, a tent again, and we'll have the food options inside. If you got, if folks haven't seen, we finally added a nice lighted sign up there, too. So hopefully that is a little more, a little more traction, like a moth to a flame, so.
Have you expanded into that, um, space from Love Your Neighbor?
We have, we have not. Uh, we actually considered doing that. Uh, we are appointing, we are expanding. We have a production space, it's actually in Gaines Township, only because it was the best location we could find. So that's good news for us that we're expanding. So, um, our product is being consumed on premise, so that's good news, so.
Okay, any other questions for the afternoon? Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Alright, so is there a motion to, um, we don't actually approve it, but recommend approval of the temporary authorization, uh, by Resident Brewery LLC doing businesses, Adesanya Meat and Micro Brewery?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
In support. Any other questions or comments? Are you selling in, um, Farmer's Market this year?
Not the Granville Farmer's Market.
Okay.
Yeah, staffing's rolling through to Farmer's Markets. We're, we want to expand that next year, though, to include Granvilles.
Okay, correct, because I know you had on there, and it was always kind of fun chatting with, with your folks. Okay, we have motion support. Um, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truce.
Yes.
Galverlos.
Yes.
Meringa.
Yes.
Norah Hook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Maus.
Yes.
So, few other, uh, announcements or items to share with the group, and please interrupt me if you have any questions, but just want to highlight that the Two Thousand Twenty-Four primary, primary election is right around the corner. As a friendly reminder, that's going to take place on Tuesday, August sixth. The polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM. Uh, the clerk's office been, has been very busy preparing and testing our election equipment. Um, they've issued almost, uh, twenty-seven hundred absentee voter ballots to date, um, and approximately forty percent have already been returned. Uh, the Election Commission had its meeting, and they've conducted their public accuracy testing. Um, and there are going to be nine days of early voting, uh, for this election, beginning on Saturday, July twenty-seventh through Sunday, August fourth, and that early voting will take place right here, um, in the city council chambers at City Hall, um, from about eight to four every day of the week, except on Wednesdays, it'll be eight to six. Also would like to highlight that many of you may have heard about the global IT outage that impacted a number of organizations, uh, late last week and into the weekend. We were very fortunate here in Granville that that did not impact our organization. So just want to shout out, uh, Jason and his team, um, that we're very fortunate that the preventative work that the IT team does, um, left us in really good shape, that we didn't have to deal with some of the, um, scrambling that a lot of other organizations did. Would also like to share that we had a new officer swearing-in ceremony today for Officer Jacob Sommer. Uh, very excited to have him joining the team, so want to say welcome to him. Um, and lastly, I'm getting into my second week with the organization, so I appreciate everyone's patience. Um, for the city council, two items that I know have been all on your minds that I am working on is I will be reaching out to all of you and to the DDA to work on scheduling a, a joint meeting with the DDA. Um, hopefully, in, in the upcoming months, we'll work to coordinate schedules and, and see, uh, when we can make that happen. Um, and then also just wanted to throw out to the group that, um, strategic planning and re-engaging the quarterly strategic planning conversations, um, that it's my understanding you all were doing regularly for some time is, is something that's on my radar to try to get reorganized, probably this upcoming quarter. So it may not be till this fall, but if there are any specific topics on any of your minds you'd like to include on that list as we get those started, please let me know, and I'd be happy to start working on that. Um, otherwise, I am just very excited to be here. I appreciate everyone's patience, and please let me know what I can do to help.
Great. Thank you. Alright, councilmember comments. Randy, let's start with you.
Uh, excuse me, not a lot. Just thank you for the nice report from the police department. It's nice to see some of our retirees out there and shooting with you guys. And I also want to say I've seen Peter and Max out around town, driving their bike, riding their bikes. I haven't met them yet, but, uh, I'm glad they're here and hopefully bring them on board, see what, they're both nice guys, so. Nice report, thanks.
Josh?
Yeah, a couple things. So, welcome, Griffin, we're glad you're here, as was said already. Looking forward to working with you. Um, I just thought that was an excellent presentation from Amanda about the Fourth of July. We definitely did a good job, um, selecting her, you know, so thanks, Marcy, to you and your, your department for working with her and helping make that hire. She did a wonderful job, and that was an awesome video. So looking forward to next year already. Um, just wanted to also just make note of the, um, the Veldmans. You know, we recognized, uh, Deputy Chief Renee Veldman earlier this month, uh, with her retirement, and I see the note in the packet about, uh, Scott Veldman leaving at the end of the month, too. And, you know, between the both of them, they have, have to have decades of service with the city, right? Um, Scott in the Fire Department and Renee in the Police Department, and just want to say publicly thank you to both of them for their many, many years of service, you know, both very passionate about the community, about public safety, and, you know, really, uh, have done a great job for us over the many years, so we'll miss them both, um, and their work here. So, wish them well in their, um, retirement future endeavors, all of that. And then I did want to just mention now, um, since it is public information, you probably saw the note in the packet here about the, uh, Community Excellence Award. Um, so we are a finalist for the Community Excellence Award for the Michigan Municipal League, uh, for the Downtown Project. Uh, worked with Teresa on that a little bit, putting that together. We had submitted last year and weren't successful, and now this year, we're going to be one of four finalists that have an opportunity to present on the island when we go to the convention, so looking forward to that, but, uh, we'll be tapping on some of you for some participation in a promotional video or, uh, especially those that are going to be going out to the island, looking forward to your participation in, uh, presentation, uh, at the convention. So it's a very honor to be a finalist, uh, for that award. It's, you know, statewide award, different communities competing, and there were fourteen applicants, so we made top four out of fourteen at this point. So, uh, looking forward to that as well, being able to kind of tell our story and sharing the good things that are going on in downtown. Uh, where some of our community placemaking efforts with the library and the commons, and then also the Farmer's Market Pavilion, so.
Thanks for your work on that, I appreciate that.
It's fun to do that. That's it, thank you.
And I'm in agreement with, uh, everything stated before me, and I have nothing more.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I, um, Griffin, great start tonight, thank you so much. And that's the first time I met, uh, or heard from Amanda, and I love her enthusiasm. And I, I think what stood out to me was her forward thinking, you know, she's already talking this year, and this is what's going to be happening, so it's very cool. It was a good move by the council to, uh, have a person lead this, and I think we got the right one. Good job.
Yeah, I just, uh, ditto everything that's been said, um, most especially about Amanda. I mean, she's rightly, as you can obviously see, earned rave reviews from our city staff, you know, from the committee, and, uh, well, from the few citizens I've talked to, I know we have noticed a change, but, um, in particular, you know, she, she mentioned that softball game. I would encourage you all to go next year because that softball game, it was finally, the chief and I talked about it both, I mean, it was finally the event that I had always envisioned, you know. It was, uh, it was really wonderful to see the stands full, you know, so many kids there, so many kids. Uh, it was a really nice event, so the whole thing was great. She's, yeah, she's keeper.
The only comment I had was just wanted to thank Marcy for such a good job that you do with the elections. You know, I think almost after every election, I come in and joke the next day or the day after and say, "Ah, thank goodness we weren't on Good Morning America this morning." But you know what? I wish we were, as an example of a well-run, perfect elections that you have. So, thank you very much. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And support. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 And the opposition, please say no. Great, thanks, everybody, enjoy the rest of the evening, it looks beautiful outside.